Welcome to August 4th, 2022 Parma City School Board Education Work Sessions. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brock.
Present.
Mrs. Curtis. Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Muto.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Unless there is an objection, we will dispense with the reading on the special meeting notice. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that the Polar portion of this meeting is being currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the Polar portion of this meeting? And if there's a problem, please speak immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, hello.
Thank you, sir. And just as a reminder, community members are welcome to attend the Board of Education Work Sessions, however, there is not an opportunity to participate. So we have some special guests here today, Mr.?
Yes. You want me to start?
Yeah.
There's some more procedures there. All right, we're good?
Yeah.
So, yeah, first, thanks to the Board for coming in early today. Obviously, safety and security are really important parts of what's in the front of all of our minds as we start school. Obviously, we all know of recent tragedies that have happened both in schools and certainly in other public areas, shopping centers, malls, parades even, unfortunately. So when we talk about safety and security in schools, it's always a very difficult prospect because there's probably a million things you could do. And, you know, it's sort of that balance between how do you make schools as safe as you can while also preserving a little bit of that feeling of childhood and how kids should feel about going to school. So we have opinions and we have done our own reading and, you know, we have our own experiences. But tonight, we have some experts with us that are going to speak. Tim Del Vecchio is a consultant with Security Services of the Ohio Schools Council. And so we're excited to have Tim here to speak in general about school safety and best practices. And we also have William Ortiz here from the Parma Armory to talk about Hogsbill 99 and also some non-lethal training that they do. I think that would be a very interesting option for us to pursue. But before we get to them, I thought we should summarize for the Board and for our public, you know, what do we do now? What do we have in schools now? So we'll start with Dr. Schneider. We'll move into Tim to talk about his ideas and some of the conversations and discussions he's been involved in throughout the state. William will speak from the, again, Parma Armory perspective about Hogsbill 99 and non-lethal options. We have sort of a recommendation for the Board that we'd like you to consider. Certainly, your discussion is part of this. And then if we have time, and we hopefully wrap up around 5:30, but if we have time, we'd like to talk a little bit about the safety features of future schools because I think that that's something that families are definitely asking, our voters are definitely asking, you know, when we look ahead to potential new construction, what are the differences and what can be built? So hopefully, this should be a relatively comprehensive meeting, but we can always have additional if there are further questions that arise. So we'll start with Dr. Schneider in terms of what do we do now? Joe Ridgely is here too. I'm sorry, I failed to introduce him. He's our Safety and Security Supervisor. He's been with the district now since the winter of 2019. And he, if I can say one thing about Joe, his relationships with our law enforcement community are really phenomenal. And he really has helped us to strengthen the partnership that exists between ourselves and the Safety Services. So thank you for being here, Joe. He got off the plane at about 3:00 a.m. this morning. Vacation ended up and turned around and came back for the work session. So Dr. Schneider, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. So as Dr. Smiley said, we wanted to take two minutes to give an overview of the changes we're doing currently, as well as some plans that we have moving forward. So to go through that list, starting at the top, we have police shifts, for lack of a better term, at Hillside, Normandy, and Valley Forge. So one shift during the school day, every day during the school year. At Hillside, two positions at Normandy, four police officers come in, and also two at Valley Forge. We had, of course, had those previously, also for Greenbrier at Shiloh and then for Parma Senior High. Done recently, as you know, as we brought in a school resource officer that split between Greenbrier and Shiloh, which are different places, that police officer shift. And then we have a resolution for this evening for you to consider, which would be for a school resource officer all day, every day at Parma Senior High. So again, replace the police officer shift that they had in the past. And we really view that as a significant improvement and it's been great relationship and conversation with the Parma Police Department to try to coordinate and find a qualified individual who we think is going to do a great job at Parma Senior High. We have, of course, our Safety and Security Team here within the district, Mr. Ridgely, of course, and then we have three residency officers that make their read throughout the district. In terms of door security, we're taking some time and efforts before the students arrive to make sure that we review the door procedures throughout the district, to make sure that we are consistent. So we want to clarify and reinforce that with all of our monitors, as well as our custodial staff, so that we can get a distributed review for everyone in terms of consistent expectations at the front door. We have been using, utilizing Alice for a few years now. There are a few things that we're doing to try and ensure that that's consistent across the district, is that we have an annual review for all of our staff through the Public Schoolwork Program. We're also going to train all of our classified staff at the building the afternoon of August 19th. So that's a new way for us to make sure that we are discussing that with all the classified staff before the students arrive. So we think that's an appropriate time to bring them all in, to have that conversation and have the drills. We also started having training for Alice with our new teachers. We have a few new teachers, and that'll be next week. Mr. Hoy, facilitate the pre-days with them. And Mr. Ridgely will be closing visuals to teach some of the Alice procedures. We also will have a drill, our first Safety and Security Drill completed collaboratively with the Safety and Security Department, on student return to the building. So we moved that timeline up to make sure that it happens earlier. A more aggressive timeline than the state requires of us. I think that's, of course, appropriate. We instituted last winter 24-hour tip line. It's operational for the district, 24/7 tip line, that is followed up by Safety and Security and the school principal, as well as the appropriate police department, Morton. Of course, we have received some tips about various concerns. That's been really tiny, of course, in allowing us to. In terms of access control, we have provided 24-hour access to the three police departments, to all of our buildings. The police departments also have access to our camera system. We instituted several years ago night locks or door barricades in all of our buildings. We completed last year building safety assessments, Mr. Del Vecchio's help. There was a pretty comprehensive process where they walked the building, met with the principal, and talked about areas for improvement. Those have all been completed and sent to the state authorities. We have, I would say, a pretty robust camera system throughout the district, about 375 cameras total in our buildings. We add a few each year as principals and building administration identify areas that could be, you know, undercover and shift the angles and those kinds of things. We've also worked on our radio communication, so we're making improvements in terms of communication between buses, schools, and the police departments. And that is part of the digital transition that we analog to digital that we're making. And when that is complete, the police departments will be able to contact the schools and the buses directly. The schools and the buses will be able to talk to each other on the radio system, which they currently can't do. We have to have the roundabout process using the CBs and recalling the school. And it's really not as, not as efficient as a building, for certain. We've also added laminated ballistic film to select areas in every building. Another feature that we're looking forward to starting here in the fall is safety meetings with our police departments. So we can make sure that we're meeting regularly, systematically, probably quarterly, and talk with them about what we can do and what they need from us and how we can continue to work together. Yes?
I don't mean to interrupt what you're doing, but there's a couple of things that you're talking about that I want to make sure that I understand and, you know.
Yeah, we're going to take questions after each part anyway, so your timing's perfect.
Yeah, please. I was actually the last bullet point. And any clarifications, questions, please?
Timing's perfect.
I was only really looking to interrupt because I didn't want to lose it. I wanted to do it in context while you were talking about it, I guess was my point. Laminated ballistic what? Film. There we go. What is that?
That would go in select areas that would provide additional protection. So currently, that is, Mr. Ridgely can speak more in the specifics as he had walked the buildings, Mr. Del Vecchio, to, you know, identify those areas. But they could talk about Greenbrier, Valley Forge, and some of the areas that they've identified to add that to the glass, which is just a fantasy.
So to give you an example, Valley Forge. The door windows on Valley Forge go from about those little four-inch windows wide. They're about eight inches wide. They go all the way down to about the floor. So each of those windows has film on it now.
On the doors?
On the door. And some of the classroom doors will have like a side window panel next to it that goes into the classroom. So we were looking at ways when we walked around the schools, certain classrooms were more vulnerable than other classrooms. So if you had a side big window that you could smash and walk through, right, we wanted to make it harder for somebody to get in. So the film is a different layer that they put on. It's a special film. It adheres to the window and then they use a special clock to go around the window. You can beat it with a baseball bat. You can't, it takes a lot of time and a lot of force to get in through those windows. I went through a workshop. Tim actually was there as well. They fired several weapons at it. The window never fell out. So it took, when you think in active shooter terms, if somebody's trying to break into a classroom, instead of just walking in in two or three minutes, it takes you five to 10. By that time, law enforcement will get there, right? And it depends on what you have to try to get into that window. It just makes it so much harder. That's what the film is.
Is it transparent?
It is. So it doesn't alter, you, you could get in different stages and stuff, but the ones that we have, you know, our see-through is clear. The only way you could really tell if you look at it is that you can see the clock going around the window.
Okay.
Didn't you do that in Normandy about 10 years ago? That something started out? I think I still teach there when they did that. That film?
I'm not sure. I don't think it's been out 10 years ago, but I do know that there was a big push for it the last couple of years. And then we went and did every building. Greenbrier, the library, if everybody's been to Greenbrier, it's official, basically. And that's Plexiglas windows going around now. Doesn't hold up as great on Plexiglas as it does regular glass. But we've actually filmed those big four-foot panels around that library as well.
Okay.
This basically came out of the Sandy Hook shooting because the shooter basically shot his way into the school. And as a response to that, some of these vendors appear with this product. And like Joe said, it really does work. I mean, ultimately, yeah, they would get in, but in a, either they Parma, by the time they were able to reach that window, you're going to have 300 police officers there. So the whole idea is that it buys you time. And it's discreet. I mean, if you're just walking through the school, you'd have no idea if that stuff was even on there.
Even with automatic weapons, huh?
Yeah.
It's actually on our front door. So when you leave tonight and you walk out the outside door, you'll see it has a big, about a half-inch-thick cock ring around it. And it's right on that outside door, so you can see. Take a look at it on your way out.
Thank you.
Ben? Do you know how many doors we have that do not have access control? And the reason I ask is that to minimize the opportunity for a staff member to prop a door open because they have somebody outside or things like that, how many doors do we have that do not have access control?
Many more than do. So every, every door in every building, except the one or two doors that have a lock in there.
Is that something that would, I know you don't want to dive too deep into the, do we have time later, but is that something in a new build that every door would be access-controlled?
Yes, every exterior door would be access-controlled and would alert whoever we would designate or whatever group we designate, if it's used at the wrong times or propped open or left open.
Really have the alert and alarm system? Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't have a swipe to get in, per se. Only certain doors would have that.
Right.
But they would have a door open alarm.
Gotcha.
With new construction.
Gotcha, okay. I think that's kind of my only.
Well, we'll go to Tim, and if there's other questions that pop up, I just mark them.
Are our current resource officers, none of them carry like our police officers do? A lot of them are armed?
Our resident, the ones who work directly for us are not armed.
Just the police that are. Okay. And then, like, I know at Normandy, you have two point, when you go into the main entrance, you have to go through one door, then there's like a bestie before you go in. How many schools have that? Where you have to go through two sets of doors to get in, current?
So there are several. And we looked, actually, we had a vendor out a couple of weeks ago because we wanted to identify schools to start making it really an airlock structural system, which is currently not the way that it's set up, even at Normandy, which has a preferred layout. Really, the ideal situation is you buzz into the first set of doors and then you're locked in and you can't go anywhere until you buzz through the second set. And that's, the Normandy layout is preferable for a couple of different reasons, which you have a window right there with a step. So we identified, for instance, Shiloh and Greenbrier have a similar situation. John Muir to a degree, but it's smaller, so it would be difficult for it to function quite in that environment. But even those buildings, they don't have kind of the airlock portion of them because it's, it's one, one point of entry for one door to open manually as opposed to two. So the purpose of bringing the vendor out is to talk about how do we get to that point?
So it would be construction?
It would be construction. You're going to have to.
It would be construction.
We have to replace the doors. We have to change the entry system. There's some fire code considerations that we discussed because that's a lot, more than several doors across Normandy. So how do we do that appropriately so we don't restrict access for students leaving in an emergency, but gain the benefit of the airlock system? So we are pricing that out at the locations that are closer to that system.
Hey, just one more thing for right now. I had mentioned to you quite some time ago, Dr. Smiley, that I would like to attend the Alice training. So I'm reminding about that. I'd like to come and participate in that.
I would like to, too.
If you would give me the, the details about, you know, timing and all that sort of stuff.
The 16th, I believe it's the 16th.
No, I said 19th.
That's for the, at the building level, for the new teachers, for the new teachers camp, right? We're actually doing their scenario drills with them on the 16th. They will be started up at Red Reef for about 10:00 in the morning and they finish about 1:00.
Sure.
I would like to just clarify one thing for the Board.
We have a work session.
As well, real quick, just the tip line. We've kind of grazed over it real quick, but just want the Board to know how this tip line works, okay, when we say 24/7. That tip line is manned by the Fusion Center in Columbus. So what that app does is when somebody calls into that tip line, they pick it up like a regular 911 operator, per se. They take down all the information. If it is a life-threatening emergency, they reach out immediately to law enforcement. Okay? If it's a bullying report, they'll follow up with an email the next day. We did have this past year, a couple of things that, you know, calling threats or whatever. Some parents called that tip line that we had posted on our website. And it went through the Fusion Center and they reached out to local police departments and got all the way to Parma. And we were able to, it's quick in some cases and long in the others, depending on how long it comes in. But they are very thorough and they do follow up the next day. The supervisor then takes that after it's been delegated out to do a follow-up with the principal, myself. Every principal is on. So let's just say you call in a threat at Greenbrier. Immediately goes to Greenbrier principal. It'll go to me. It goes to the police department. In this case, Bob Curtin is on the safety tip line, okay, for the school. If there wasn't a resource officer at that building, it immediately, if it's life-threatening, goes right to Parma Police Department. Parma Police Department then reaches out to myself, makes me aware of the threat. And then we work it out from there on how we're going to deal with it. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more information on how that tip line works.
Yeah, great. Do we have any, I know you said last winter we implemented that. Do we have any promotional pieces for students and teachers to, like, see something, say something, here is the number, put it in your phones, here's a magnet for your fridge, here's, do we have?
And your schools, there's posters for that tip line?
Okay.
And it's on another Safety Security website, it's on the main website.
Yeah, we just had some conversation about making it a little bit more prominent as well. I mean, I anticipated the questions, I wanted to see where I could find it tonight. And it is probably two or three clicks down. So Amy and I talked about making that more prominent.
Even just in the, in the immediate universe of students, like, there's so much happening and, you know, you're, a poster on a wall is, is great, but sometimes, like, you just don't, you're not aware of all the things on the wall, you know? Things like that. So something more direct to them or even on the, when you're doing your blue forms, like, hey, save this number in your phone, like a pop-up, anything to really put it there and make them know that this resource is available to you if you need it. And, you know, even a little training of how to use it appropriately might not be a bad thing. So you don't have them, you know, calling to complain that a teacher yelled at them or something.
And also do an email to parents at the beginning of the year, like, welcome back email.
Yeah. Just, it would be, it, just a, you know, and sometimes you'd need that physical prompt to put this in your phone now so you have it, but it would be a good thing, yeah. And do the dispatchers at the police department have those numbers? Do we happen to know? Like, the, do they, like, if somebody called the police department and said, do you know what Parma City Schools 24-hour tip line is, like, do they have, do they have it?
If you call the police department directly, they deal with it directly.
Okay, they would.
So they're not going to refer you to the tip line. They're going to handle it right then and there, depending on what the tip is that comes in. Dispatch has, dispatch isn't at the police department, right?
Right, they're.
So, but Distats has my, both my phone numbers, my personal phone and my other phone. They use it quite a few times in the middle of the night. So that, those calls I usually get. But if they don't, it's usually a shift supervisor that handles it right when it comes in.
Gotcha. Awesome, thank you.
So Tim, if you can give us some background of what you've done throughout the state, but with Parma specifically, and anything you would advise that we should consider more than we're considering at this point?
Well, the good news is that usually when people reach out to me for help, I say, well, you might want to check with Parma because they're, they're doing it already. So you guys are kind of my consumer reports because you're already dealing with a lot of the products that people are looking into and, you know, they can talk to Joe and how did this work out for you? But one of the things that Parma is very much involved in is something called the First Ring Security Initiative. And this is the city of Cleveland and all the suburbs that touch upon Cleveland. And we get together once a month for breakfast at our office in Independence. And it's basically an information sharing forum. And I know we've got a lot of good information from you folks about after-school events because that is something that's not really in the state template for the emergency plans. So how do you manage security at football games, basketball games? So a lot of people are coming here to replicate what, what you're doing. And that's the whole point of the First Ring Initiative is that we're sharing best practices. And it's also a network to where, you know, people come and go in this business. So if Joe needs to call in Cleveland Heights, he knows who he needs to talk to and the phone number and they can hash things out directly. I don't know if you know this or not, but Parma has come into some money. You guys, big winners for the OFCC grant.
$50,000, I hope?
Yeah, you were there. I think the governor saw you and he felt guilty, so he must have got on the phone.
I'd like to thank them.
If I can give a little background on this, because we got caught a little flat-footed, but really it wasn't any fault of our own. These were grants that Joe applied for a year ago, literally November and December of 2021. And we were initially denied that. And I hate to cast dispersions, but the OFCC didn't even know that that money had been released before WKYC was printing how much money Parma got. And people are texting me saying, what are you doing with this money? Why did Densler get so much money? And we really sort of think that, you know, the governor called a press conference and that, you know, he was way ahead of anybody else. So we found out about this Monday. We actually don't have the money yet and it's actually a reimbursement scenario. But that, those grants were written specifically for radios that would communicate directly with the police. And we would have a much larger number in case there was an emergency situation. The other piece, because I had an email from a parent from Densler, and they said, why did Densler get so much more? And it's because of its location to the, to the towers. And Joe can probably explain that better than I can.
Yeah, the radio system, the way it is now, it operates on an old analog system. So I'm not a big radio tech guy, but radios now are digital, it's a lot clearer communication. But because of our tower, where it sits right there next to Densler, that's where we house our repeaters for the whole district. Transportation repeaters up there, high school repeaters are up there. So part of that Densler money, when we went through the OFCC, was to figure out ways to be fiscally responsible with that, with my budget. And we applied for the grant, but in doing that, in my mind, we're like, well, we still have to do this regardless if we get the grant. So we were trying to make, I put through motions for both platforms. So Densler, because the tower sits at Densler, it's really Densler's address, so there's two repeaters, security or high school repeaters, that are about $10,000 apiece. So that's why Densler has like $20,000 more, right, for this new radio system. And that's not advertised stuff that's out there for people to know. But again, everybody wants to know where the money's going. So Dr. Smiley reached out to me and I let her know that that's, I didn't have to look for it, I already knew because I was wondering where to try to get the grant for the building. With that being said, the Board approved the purpose for the bus radios. So the bus radios, and just because of COVID and pandemic and everything else, everything is backward. Everybody's having a hard time getting door parts, electronic parts, things like that. So we are waiting. We put in for those repeaters over a year ago, okay?
Joe, could you explain what a repeater is?
A repeater helps boost the signal so Parma can talk to transportation. And because it's up on that tower, the antenna is about 400 feet in the air, okay? So it gets a wider range. And that's what those repeaters do. They kind of jump off each other differently. Valley Forge has a local repeater inside its building. They kind of boost their signal to the tower. So there's a lot of working parts to change out the digital system within it. When we approved the bus radios, the bus radios was approved with a transportation repeater that has to go up there. And that way, it gives them the coverage when they go on field trips and, you know, all the bus routes that they do, to get that coverage that they need to talk, okay? So the bus repeater is actually up there as well. So when it comes in, that's where it'll end up being.
So just for clarification, because there was a lot of back and forth and nobody actually said it, for everybody watching, the $50,000 grant that we were awarded is fantastic, but we've already spent that money. So this grant reimburses the general fund for the stuff we already bought, right?
No.
No?
We haven't bought it.
No, it was a state grant, so we went in the fund 499, just essentially a state grant.
Okay.
It didn't go to the general fund at all.
So we've already approved it. So it's already earmarked?
Correct.
Is that the right word? Okay, so it's already earmarked. So we won't be getting anything additional for that. It's already.
And it's specific to those radios.
Right.
Mr. Geller already spoken for?
Yes.
Now, I think Tim and I talked today, and between Tim's relationships with the folks down in Columbus and OFCC, that I think there's a lot more folks that are in our position that said, okay, well, we're going to apply for these grants, but we also need to do something in the meantime because safety is priority with our buildings. So he's going to reach out and see if they'll accept us doing some other work, since we've already made some changes. The bus, the repeaters for Densler, for the security that were earmarked, right, for those two repeaters, those haven't come in yet, so we'll be able to use their money for that, absolutely. And then we can get that back into the general fund, wherever it came from. That I do know. I have a meeting, I think all, myself, have a meeting on Monday with Ms. Plasman to kind of talk about it a little bit. But just from my conversation with Tim earlier today, he's going to reach out to them because we're not the only ones in the same situation that just all of a sudden received this magic box of money. And they've already earmarked money for other things.
Great, okay.
I didn't know we were going to get it, though. I was hoping we were on that list.
Yeah, it was a nice surprise. It's a bit complicated, but when the first, the grant was first announced, there was a very limited pot of money. And if you did the math, well, gee, you'd be lucky if 50 schools come out a winner on this thing. But everybody wanted to apply anyway. And when they announced that first round of grants, if you've got the microscope out and you look closely at who were the winners, a lot of them, the schools were built when McKinley was president. I mean, it's a really old building, so it was kind of understandable how those folks, you know, came out a winner. And I think what was unfortunate that an email was sent up by OFCC and it was worded in some. in such a way that people had the idea, I didn't, I wasn't a clever enough waiter or something like that, it was some, and that wasn't the case. It was just they didn't have enough money to, to spread around. Well, after the, some, in Columbus, they had this additional money coming in. And the thinking was, these folks did such a good job, all the application and paperwork is there, it just poofed, and, and now we have it. But as Joe described, a lot of schools went out and bought stuff because, well, we didn't win the grant, so I guess we'll have to pay for it ourselves. So we're going to have to sort that out, so.
Does it, does it release that stipulation about it being specific to radios and stuff like that? Because we've already bought.
Yeah, because the way the SOCC grant was worded, they gave you like a spreadsheet of things that you could use the money for, and you had to check off that, oh, I want radios, or I want anti-bullistic film or whatever. So the theory was that if you got the money, you'd have to spend that on those items.
Put it on your market.
That's, that's why it's a, you got to fix things.
Anything else, Tim, in terms of trends or anything you're seeing that we need to?
I'm glad you mentioned that because Cindy and I were down there together, and I spent three days at the behavioral assessment training class that's done by Dewey Cornell at the University of Virginia. This is something Governor DeWine and the state's really pushing. It's in House Bill 123, if you're aware of that, that by March of 2023, if you have a school building that has grade six through 12th grade in it, you have to have a behavioral assessment team for that particular building. And what they're recommending is, who is on that team? Well, school administrator, that could be the principal, a vice principal, guidance counselor possibly, the mental health professional, and an SRO, if you have one, a security person. So the idea is, is that if a threat comes to the attention of that particular school building, there's a process how you sort that out. Is that something that is going to require some serious attention? Or was it just some kid blowing off steam? And that's the whole point of the training is that, you know, what is it? So I'm urging people that, you know, you have to get trained in this because the members need to have a certificate that gets uploaded in the state database. Joe's already working on it, but that's just something that we have to be aware of because we've got to get it done by March of 2023.
So there's training to help me when I get a call at like 5:30 in the morning that says there was a threat and like?
Well, this, it could be.
And where can I sign up for that?
It, it could be the tip line, as a result of the tip line, if somebody gets notified. But more than likely, it, it might be a fight that takes place at the school, and, you know, words get said and they're a little disturbing. So how do you sort that out? And most importantly, there's a documentation process now, because this is one of the things that state's very keen about. When we've had incidents at other places, what looks bad when the board and the commission comes in to rip you apart is that, well, where's the documentation? What kind of intervention was done with this kid? If intervention was needed. So that it's a bit of a process there, you know? Another thing that we're working on very quickly is that Joe and I have had conversations with the Ohio Tactical Officers Association. They do the training for the Ohio Schools Council. And these are the people that basically train the SWAT teams and the police. And one of the things that's very popular right now in Cogge County is that we're training security officers, because a lot of them, you know, they go to school in Columbus, they get their ticket, and that's it. So we want to kind of tune these people up, make sure they're aware of what the procedures are within a school district, you know, what, what their limitations are in terms of use of force, and that type of thing. It's basically covering the district, because if any member had what happened, we train them, this is our policy, they weren't aligned with our policy. So this is something that, we're in the process of kind of set something up.
Does this behavioral training have like a component of red light, like red flag alerting? Is that something that we should consider for all of our administrators to have? Like, is that the level it is? So is there interacting with students on a day-to-day basis that if there's something that, a pattern that's emerging, like, is that present in this training that would be relevant to them?
You would probably use that. There's a lot of training courses out there, and they're all good, but basically, what I'm talking about is a response to House Bill 123. This is a mandate. We, we have to do it whether we like it or not. And even though you might have a PhD in child psychology that's written three or four books on the subject, that person still has to get certified. So it's, there's a degree of, of state regulation involved in this. And we have to upload the certificates into the state database to verify that we've done it.
So with that, House Bill 123, this is existing staff that we have that has to, that we have to get these teams together. The government isn't mandating us that we have to hire new people out.
No, 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 this, this is your.
I hate when the government doesn't.
This is, yeah, this is one of these things where, you know, there's, some people are saying, well, why can't we just have a district team? And the thinking of the legislature and the experts is that, no, we need it for each school because we want to make sure those people know the kids. So that's the whole idea, is that you know the kid that made the alleged threat. Now, one of the good news, I don't know, is that let's say you have a district child psychologist, that person can be a member of each one of these building teams. So it's not like, oh, we have to hire a psychologist, not early, beg on school. So you can import people for your team.
How much is the training, do we know, per person?
I like the magic word, it's free for some of them.
Well, I, right now, the state's provided, I think, 14 pathways to, to get the certificate. If you go through the Ohio Attorney General's Office, watch some videos, you'll get a certificate. You can go through Public School Works, watch some videos and get a certificate. The other ones all involve in-person training, and there's a fee associated with it. Now, the Ohio Schools Council, we're going to put something together, and we're trying to do it at a minimal cost, so if people decide, well, yeah, well, we want some in-person training for this. And so it would be minimal, because we're not allowed to make a profit. We're basically a creation of the state legislature, and we're basically a supersized ESC, I would say. So there might be some costs connected with lunch. And I, I think the manual's like 50 bucks, but it, it, it's not, not going to be anything extreme.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Let's jump over to.
Just one real quick. So Tim, you're certified to do this now because you, you went through that.
Yeah, I sacrificed myself for three days. No, we had a group of people, there are some people from the Cogge County ESC that are trained too. So you're going to have.
Yeah, this is Cogge, do you have any?
Yeah.
And I'm certified as well. I did the, I did an online course several months ago when it first came out, just because we were looking at what platform we wanted to use. So I jumped in, I didn't do the Public School Works one yet, right? I did the Attorney General one, and printed out, as soon as you're done with it, you print out the certificate and you're done, so.
What do you think? Do you think, do you think this is something that the online portion would be sufficient for someone that has no prior training in an area like this, other than what was kind of auxiliary to their education degree or something? Or do you think that we should invest in like good in-person training?
I'm going to say right now, knowing the schools and the staff that we have on hand with the behavior specialists, the principals, you know, and psychologists at the school, schools already have a firm foundation on the team. I talked to Mr. Hoon about this a few months ago, and we already technically have the platform for it.
Okay.
It's just a matter of picking the people at my each building, putting them on the list, because we have to submit the paperwork in March.
Right.
That will be probably on the safe portal like everything else is. And you have to upload your certificate so they see that it's done. But we already have the personnel that can do it. And, you know, the time that we invest in these students already, I've seen firsthand, especially at the elementary level, you know, we're above and beyond with what we're doing kids. So we already have a firm foundation, it's just now of putting those pieces together. And just, here's the list of each person for each building, and then getting their training done by March.
I think that's the good news, is that schools, especially in Cogge County, you folks have been dealing with kids with issues for a long time, and there is a group, you might call it something else, you don't call it a security assessment team, it might be a care team or whatever. But this is bringing some, a level of formality to it, and some structure, and, you know, and the state knows who's on the team.
We have problem-solving teams, PS teams. All right, let's, um, thank, thank you, Tim. And I don't, we can certainly come back to Tim if there's questions, but there's a lot of content we want to get through, and I want to make sure we, we stay within an agenda. So William is here from the Parma Armory, and House Bill 99 certainly has created a lot of conversation about arming and who to arm and who not to arm and what type of training. And so a lot of what William will talk about is that, that House Bill 99 piece and how we might want to consider what it's allowing us to do. But then beyond that, he's going to talk about some other training that the Armory offers in terms of non-lethal options, which, as I looked through it briefly, I, quite frankly, it was pretty compelling to me, so. Looking forward to what you have to offer, sir.
All right, sorry, guys, I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to be kind of be put on the spot performing. I mostly.
It's Rob's fault, we thought he was going to be here.
I thought so too, and he was like, you're doing it. I said, well, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Is he here?
No, I was definitely blaming Rob.
Oh, yeah, he's a good man, but when he asked me to do what I said, I would love to, I, I'm a father myself, I have kids still in school, and I, I'm very passionate about this. I actually had a chance to reach out to some organizations, Buckeye Firearms, some legal, US Law Shield also, and we talked to them about House Bill 99. If you want to go ahead and bring it up and bring up the first one, we talked about the requirements that you look for the mobile training team. Everything highlighted is the parts that mostly affect the schools. Everything else affects the mobile training team, which isn't developed yet. They still haven't did it until December of 2022 to actually get this down. So what this is, is a rough guideline of things that they are considering to have part of the training. See, everybody's shaking their head. This is why it's kind of hard, because I couldn't find an answer. I couldn't even find out who the chief officer was or who the regional officer's going to be. Why? Because they still haven't picked one. It's actually listed on their public website for postings of if you'd like to apply for it. So that's still out there. But when we talk about that, basically with this bill, it actually establishes a chief mobile training team. There's going to be one chief officer, 16 regional officers, so they're each going to be designated to a different area. Cuyahoga County actually has their own officer. Now, what that person's going to do is coordinate training with the schools, management for everything else. But if there is an incident, they do not take over. It's going to be up to the police and the school administration to coordinate and work everything together. We were actually going through it, and I had a chance to actually sit down with some officers, I'm very lucky, some of my friends are retired police officers, marshals and all that. We had a nice conversation about this bill before I came here. Why? Because I want to get other perspectives besides mine. So we looked at some of the training that they're talking about. When it comes to the training for mitigation techniques, communication capabilities, coordination, coordination techniques with all the different groups, because you have police, maybe fire, EMS, where the incident is, where the teachers are located, there's a lot to coordinate with a lot of moving pieces. You guys have a very good staff that has a lot of, and ideas that they're putting into place which are phenomenal, security film, more cameras, being able to isolate where an individual's at if there is a shooting, will minimize the time for the police to respond instead of wasting time in an area where he's not, or shooting. So we're looking at some of the other training that are going to be requirements for it. Psychological, control of critical incidents, de-escalation techniques, crisis intervention, trauma, first aid care, even a basic CPR course is going to be eight hours. Now, if you add EMT training, you're looking at three to four weeks. Higher training than that, a few more months, depending on how, what level you want them to go to. Also, it's going to be looking at tactics of responding to critical incidents, at least four hours of training, a scenario-based simulation training. And then we're going to look at realistic urban training. All of this has to be done in under 24 hours. It's not to exceed 23. And I, I didn't write, but what it looks at, what it's looking like is, they're still trying to figure out how this is going to play a part, just to meet that requirement. The sta, standards are not even completely done.
So can I, can I, I'm sorry, I apologize, but I just want to be very clear. So the, the House bill authorized us to eventually put people through a training process to carry in school and be, you know, compliant to be able to use that in the worst of circumstances.
Yes.
But the training itself does not exist yet?
Not yet. Not yet. This bill is more of the guidelines to create the team that will create the standards that the schools will actually be going to.
So if a parent calls me and says, well, the House Bill 99 says your teachers can carry, it, it does, but there is no infrastructure developed yet to actually get to that process.
Correct. And that's what they have until December of 2022 to actually finalize.
Thank you.
And can I just mention, to make sure I'm clear on this, as I understand, House Bill 99 also, these are going to be the minimum things that have to be required in order to, for the state to allow any particular employee, teacher to carry. However, we have the ability to increase that, improve it as much as we want. So if we don't feel that when they come to finally come down to their decision-making, if we don't feel that we can get adequate amounts of this or more that we would want, we can just require more.
Yes, ma'am, that actually is located a little bit later on. Where the schools, don't worry about it. You guys can always mandate more training, more recertification, more annual training. Instead of just once a year, you can change it to quarterly. They're your standards. These are just the guidelines that they're putting out there for right now, and nothing is truly set in stone until they appoint that chief training officer, and he picks his 16 lieutenants that cover the entire state. And that's what we're actually waiting for, we want to see what the guideline is. When you actually go down, it talks about some duties of a regional mobile training officer, where it's assess the buildings, which you guys already have a phenomenal team that's done that. They've looked at your weak points, they try to share those up. This is some of the duties that this officer will actually travel around to all the schools and actually do. They're going to assist in communications between fire, EMS, police and all that to set up the basis, which you've already done. Didn't have to wait for this bill. That is phenomenal. Actually, when I was sitting here, I go, well, I have nothing to talk about, it's all pretty much done. I just, and I don't even have an answer to the requirements that's going to be fully required from them yet. That's what I've actually spent the entire time trying to find, and I just got more of these documents of the same thing. When we actually go to the next page, it's going to be to, scroll down a little bit more, ma'am, please? We talked about some of the areas when it comes to enforcing the rules and regulations. Once set forth, there's going to be the basic guidelines for a teacher to actually carry in the schools. They'll actually be there to check the training, the recertification, the paperwork, to make sure that it is current and is correct, even with the background checks and everything that needs to be done. All additional requirements? Yes, sir?
Please, a second.
Of course, sir.
Where, where are we looking at here?
We're actually, sorry, we're actually.
I'm trying to follow along.
No, that's okay, we're actually underneath right here for the powers and the duties. And that's what we're looking at.
Powers and duties.
And a lot of it, I kind of went through and kind of bypassed a little bit because we've covered it, and I, I don't want to, you know, keep jumping on that, but, I mean, it's a phenomenal security team.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Number five, under powers and duties, is that the same tip line process that we already use?
Correct. That's, that's why I kind of, just kind of jumped through it, because you guys have already, you're on top of it.
We're on top of it.
It is phenomenal.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, you guys have a great team. That's why I'm just sitting here going, well, that just made my presentation shorter, so I don't know if there's anything else to say.
You're nailing it, though, isn't it?
Well, they already nailed it, I'm just kind of riding the coattails.
I appreciate this document.
Well, this document.
We can read them.
But of course, well, I wanted you guys to get a sense of what requirements are highlighted that's kind of more opposed to you. Everything else is more the development of the training team, the curriculum, and the standards that they're going to have. That's why when it comes to arming the teachers, it's just giving you guidelines to allow you to supersede some of the actual laws that we do have in place about having firearms in schools. They do have some amendments, but there are curriculum that has to be met. They do have some amendments, but there are curriculum that has to be met. Myself, as a concealed carry licensee, I can't come to a school property, leave my vehicle and carry a firearm. I'm not allowed. By law, as soon as I step on my vehicle, even if it's to secure my weapon in my trunk, I'm breaking the law. That's a felony, right there. There's no doubt about it. Special duties actually had to be amended in there to allow teachers to carry on the property for that reason. So that's what a lot of this training team, a lot of the actual legality that actually goes in there and talks about. There are some court cases that are actually listed if you keep, well, it's not even actually highlighted, but there were police officers who actually retired and were hired by schools as security, which there was a court case that allowed him not to carry, but because he fell underneath the LEOSA for the retirement, it allowed him to carry again in areas where you're going to do it or not. So when it comes to arming the teachers and the requirements that we're actually looking through, everything is going to be up to the training team once it's finally done. When we actually go to the very last page, where we talk about the public notice requirement, if you do decide to arm teachers, you do have to alert the parents that there are individuals that will be armed. When it comes to that requirement, they're very clear about that. When it comes to the training and when it would be fully established, I do not have an answer and I wish I did.
Does that, so as I'm reading this, this not, that it's not either one of these types of record, which makes it exempt from a public records law, does that mean that this notification would list the teachers that?
No.
Okay, so it will not, there will be no public way to identify which teachers would carry?
You just have to notify them that you will have armed teachers in the school and that is pretty much it.
I don't have to tell how many either.
And it doesn't have to be a teacher. Correct. It could be any staff that Now, that's where it changes a little bit. When it comes to the staff, when you have private security, they fall underneath a different category. So they still have to go through a pot of training and meet certain requirements. That is still unclear if that's going to cover any staff member for the schools, because they do fall underneath something a little bit different category.
So what about, what would that look like in terms of, yeah, like, because not that it, just as an example, yeah, custodial staff, like what would that look like in terms of that if we hired anybody, all of this is theoretical in my head, but like, say we wanted to have the person, and I'm not saying we do or don't, but say we wanted to have the person sitting at the door of the schools that have the ability to carry.
Yes, sir.
If they are not a licensed teacher in the state of Ohio, technically, we're not sure if they would still fall under the OPADA training or something else?
You are correct. When it comes to private security, they fall underneath two different categories, especially when it comes to OPADA training and, and their strict security training. There's two different groups. OPADA follows the same guidelines as an Ohio police officer, they just don't hold a commission through the state.
What about like Charlie?
Yeah, to clarify, so
What would Charlie be?
Well, let's talk about just a monitor, right?
Correct.
Or a residency officer. So they're not private security. No, forget about it. Let's not even, let's not even call them any kind of officer.
Even if you went with a teacher's aide.
A teacher's aide, okay.
Just another adult who's over the age 21 who could legally own a firearm. If they went through the training, they would meet the definition technically as a staff member to be able to carry if they were authorized.
And they don't need a pot. That's a whole different
That, that is a whole different. They actually changed the training hours from 700 hours, which is a full OPADA training, to less than 23 hours.
Right, right.
So I'd just like
From 700 to 23?
Yes, sir.
That was, that was the big
Sorry, not to exceed 24. So 23 hours and 59 minutes.
That is
He just tells me I don't want this to happen at all.
Just let me clarify a little bit for everybody. The way this came out was the schools in this rural areas that don't have somebody to get there in time, a Mormon teacher. They challenged the OPADA ORC with that verbiage, okay? Now, I've done the research as well. I've spoke to OPADA over at the Tri-C Academy, the OPADA instructors and Police Academy over there. And just like we spoke about earlier, it is not. There is no information out there, right? You don't have to use the teacher, right? They're still waiting for them to come out, for the OPADA instructors at the Police Academy saying, okay, this is the curriculum that you can teach in the 24 hours. The school board can mandate X over this, right? But the verbiage right now is that the reason they did it is to encompass teachers or they went so far as even say security because security wasn't according to the ORC because they fell under the police OPADA, right? So that's what they're still sorting out right now, that you can carry with board approval. You want to go through, the mobile training can come to you and you can schedule it that way, or they're going to have, Tri-C is going to have a class that if we wanted to send somebody to or mandate that they go to. That's what they're waiting for. I reached out to them about three weeks ago and they still were waiting. They had some meetings in Columbus, trying to sort through some of the dust. And I'm supposed to follow up with them next week, just to see if anything's come out yet as far as the Police Academy's concerned.
Let me ask this, Joe, because we led right up to it before you get into non-lethal, and I do think less lethal, I should say, it's very valuable. For the board, if you can pick up this letter that was from Captain McCann of the Parma Police Department, and the chief and the captain encouraged Joe and his staff, meaning the three residency officers we have, to obtain the training necessary to carry firearms and assemble a thorough policy to safely arm yourselves while on duty within the school district. And quite frankly, you know, in terms of school administration, you know, you look to me to make recommendations, my immediate recommendation would be we follow through with that, you know, and then continue to have conversations about other means and who else we might want to arm or not arm or different hires, but that would be an immediate step we could take. But again, that, even that training doesn't exist yet.
Correct.
So I have
Well, actually, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, go ahead.
But when it comes to that training, when it comes to the Ohio, with the mobile training team, that's their curriculum, what they cover.
When it's developed.
Correct. Any additional training required from you, reading from this, will be at your cost and your expenses in the budget.
But even to take
But we have to pay for this too, it says.
Not for the first 23 hours.
Not for the first basic initial training. That's what appropriate, I think it's $6 million, it's appropriated for the first fiscal year to develop the training team and get everything going. That only covers anything extra will be at the school's expense, and that's how I
I'm going to venture to say that OPADA
But it says the act further requires
Will come out with something quicker.
It says the act further requires school districts and schools to pay all fees for training through the Center for Individuals Whom They Authorize to Convey Deadly Weapons Into a School Safety Zone.
Yes. And that's where the development of the training team comes into play with appropriations of the money for that basic training.
Okay.
Now, that's what they're assembling for and that's what they're going to be giving you is a basic course. But if you feel that that's not enough time, that's where you'd require teachers to actually get more training through OPADA, through a certified course or the standards that you set.
So this is going to be one, another one of those, it's going to kind of look like a, I don't want to call it a shell game, but they'll give us the money in the form of a grant and we'll pay for this instead of them just
I, actually, I don't know. So I went through the 24, I went through a 24-hour class, but according to OPADA and the Police Academy over at Tri-C, right now, in their minds, in their minds, without anything officially coming out on paper, they think it's going to be the same curriculum that they teach now with maybe some different components because it's school-related and how to deal with students. That cost, and I'm just speculating because I've done it myself for every year, right? That initially you are certified for when you go through a program for 16 months, okay? Once you go through it after the end of 16 months, you have to re-qualify every year. If you do not re-qualify every year with your firearm, you have to get recertified through the class again, right? Or continue.
And just all 16 months?
But every time you restart it, you get 16 months, right?
You have to do the entire thing all over again?
The 24 hours. But the cost? If I can pay for it out of my pocket, they're just, I think they're banking on how many they're going to have to do in a lot of a big chunk of money.
Right.
But the cost per person to take myself, if I wanted to go to OPADA and go through their 24-hour course right now, is about $300, okay? It's, it isn't anything crazy as far as money at the moment. So, and again, I just know this firsthand, that's what I've been doing for 20 something years.
So I have a, nobody better come to me when I say this. I have a very big concern about, there is, I want to word this very carefully. We have all watched the news last several years and we have all watched, and every single person in this room has some version of unconscious bias. There is not anything on this training that addresses that. Police officers, Joe's team, people that Joe can first-hand make sure that the training and everything that's rigorous under him is fantastic, putting it in the hands of somebody that is not directly under our safety and security director is terrifying to me because we don't know what any of us, like, we don't know where anybody's head goes when they leave their classroom. Like, we don't know about the things that people think about and everything like that. When you have somebody leading that team, that's great. So if in any capacity we're considering something like that, I really would like to make sure that, A, that's part of the training that we do for even our own team, our own resident officers, and anybody else that would be falling under that, because that is very, it's a real thing. I also, like, what is going to be, the, just based on the immediate recommendation, like, that we do this, what then constitutes the moment where it's okay to pull out your weapon? Like, what are those identifying things? Do you suspect someone has a weapon? Do you see the weapon? Like, I don't, right?
If you've gone, if you've done firearm training, you're trained that already. You know, like, I've gone through classes, you know when it's appropriate, when it isn't. You already, you already trained that before.
It's not in there.
It's ingrained into you of when it is and isn't appropriate to draw a weapon, because once you make that decision to draw your weapon, you're doing that for one purpose and one purpose only, and it's to kill the person in front of you, and that is a decision that you're going to have to live with. So, yeah, you're trained already on making that decision prior to that. It's not something that you're just going to
My, I guess my concern then is, like, you are a very intelligent human being. You are, I'm going to make the assumption to say mentally stable.
Most of them.
Like, we have those things, but like, I would, I would want someone in the district to have the power to say, like Joe, to say, I'm just going to use this example because I firmly believe our police officers, who I support wholeheartedly, should be able to do this. Chief, the wife and I had a, we're going through some stuff. I'm not right in the head right now. Here's my weapon, I'm going to go hang out on duty. I think chief should be able to say, hey, bud, something's not quite right. Why don't you come in here? I think Joe should be able to do that with whomever we arm in the school district. Like, there has to be a mental piece to, to it.
Yeah, and I think it's important because what we've learned very clearly tonight, I mean, and I thought I had a relatively modest suggestion with arming Joe's team, and we can't even do that yet, so these are decisions we don't necessarily have to make this evening, but a point of consideration that I want to be very clear on is we control this, right? So it's not everybody within the same classification, you know, can sign up and I'm carrying. The other pieces, they have to opt in. So I don't think a single teacher is going to opt in, because in all honesty, every teachers' union in America, let alone Ohio and Northeast Ohio, has come out against this. So I, I mean, you're talking about some select classified employees, and I just think we don't have to decide this tonight, but I think there should be some consideration for that. If it can be one more deterrent, one more protector
For like expanding people that would answer, like, expanding, like, not inside
Let, let me, I guess, clarify for you, because I know, I think I know where it's going here. It's, and again, they wrote the letter, okay? Based on, that letter came out of an interview with the SRO and they started asking us for thoughts about the House Bill 99 stuff. At the time, and because of the relationship with the police department, okay, I told the chief and the captains that were at the table that anybody that we would hire, whether it be myself or my team or anybody outside of that line, right, that I would like them to be at the table and have a say. So the chief of Parma jumped in with both feet and said, count me in, let me know whenever you want to have the first meeting and screening process. Back to what you were saying about training, and like Mr. Ruda said, when you're going through the class, they, and again, you can't, I don't know what happens when you leave the room tonight when you go home. So your mental capabilities might change between now and whatever happens at home. But they teach you in the class, there's only certain times where you're allowed to pull your weapon, and that's it. And it's ingrained in you, right? You're not doing it because you got in an argument with Johnny or you think Johnny has a knife in his pocket, you're not going to pull your gun out, right? There are ingrained in your training when you pull your weapon. If you pull that weapon, that's
Shoot to cap.
Correct. So to help ease, and that's what Mr. Smilex said, I think that at the ground level right now, with the relationship with the police department and offering up training and offering up their range and to train with them in our buildings the way they train, right, and do building searches, they've already offered that to my team about a year and a half ago, okay? And at the time, we just weren't in that place, okay? So that's already been offered before, right? But now I embrace the fact that the police departments want to join with us to make sure that the board is supported and to make sure the right decisions are made and that they have a say in. So I think when it gets to that level and the next step is there, I think the police department coming in will definitely help ease some of those questions.
And let's, let's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I have two questions real quick. How many people on your team?
Four.
Four, five?
Eight.
Six?
Five.
How many? How many police officers are paid to work in our high schools right now?
We have two in Normandy.
During a typical school day, how many are in it?
Five total.
Five, five total.
And where are they again? I don't know if you mentioned.
Normandy, two in Normandy, two in Valley Forge, one in Parma Senior High.
And then we're looking at SROs, right?
Oh, that includes the SRO at Parma Senior High.
That includes the SRO.
That's why it's only one.
Two, two and one?
Two, two and one.
Any, any at the middle schools?
Yes, one splits between Shiloh and Greenbrier, so .5 each really. And we do have very regular coverage at Hillside, so we can confidently say we want to Hillside.
And then elementary, who you have?
Mine was on silent and still rang, so I don't know what's going on.
Mine was on too.
Okay, any at the elementaries?
No.
Okay, so that's, my question is, we have somewhat of armed force presence in most of our schools, except
In the secondary schools, we do.
The secondary schools, yeah.
So essentially, six out of our 15.
Where's your head at in terms of, and then I really do want to hear about these non-lethal options, but where is your head at in terms of, like, other, like, I don't want to say that I'm not open to discussing anything, I was just, within, I have training issues now within the classroom and other things, but like, are you thinking like people at doors, are you thinking about people positioned in strategic locations?
I appreciate that, sort of soft thoughts for me to share my honest feelings. I honestly feel like we should not have any blanket no's. I think that it's easy to find a nine million things that could happen and go wrong, but let's just say we have a retired police officer who is a door monitor at Parma Senior High. Why wouldn't we take advantage of this opportunity and have an additional presence? Let's say there's retired military that's a custodian at, at Parma Park and has an exemplary military record and wants to be a part of this. To me, a blanket no is an easy, and other school districts have done it, blanket no's, although I don't even know what they're saying. They're saying no teachers. Well, guess what? Teachers don't want to do it anyway, so it's not going to be a teacher thing. But there could potentially be some classified folks that could make sense. And again, it's not all custodians, it's not all door monitors. We control that. We're the, we're the team, we're at the end of the funnel to say, we're going to look at your record, we're going to look at your classes, we're going to sit down with the chief and be part of that sort of screening process. To me, I think we should pursue that.
So one of the things I wrote down is, right before even we started this thing, was we would ask for volunteers that wanted to be armed in the school, and then we would vet the crap out of them. I seriously vet, vet, vet. I don't, FBI, CBI, I don't care if somebody, everybody's gonna do it, but they're gonna be vetted. So that was one of the things I wrote down. Then I crossed it off, and then I went back, and I'm going back to it. That makes sense to me. If there is some retired military guy that has an exemplary record, that would like to do that, be a hall monitor, or whatever, custodian, whatever, and that person be armed, and we have that, more security in there. Because I'm looking at, you know, two, two, one, and one and a half.
It's the elementaries that are.
They're very careful.
Well, that's, that's what I would like to see covered more. Not to interrupt, is the whole idea. When I tell people I teach them, when I conceal carry, you're not gonna know I have a firearm. That's my job. I don't want you to know. You have police officers, you have monitors, those are the first people that somebody will look at. Now, if there's a firearm that's physically on their side, even in a Level 3 retention holster, which is very hard even for the officer to draw out, even for somebody to try to take, it's already a visual sign of, oh, he's walking that way, I'm gonna go this way, or her. Now, if there's teachers and I, I'm on the fence about this myself, only because I shoot 12,000 rounds a month. That's me alone. Now you're asking somebody to be able to qualify once every six months, or, you know, 50 or 100 rounds, whatever the count is. It's, it's a big thing to pull your firearm, but I don't know who's carrying and who's not. That's the whole point. You might have three teachers in one hallway that have firearms, have great training, or just a gentleman walking around. It's concealed. That's the biggest thing that people need to know that's out there, because they always have guessing. There might be 10 teachers in one room, they don't know if there's 10 firearms, or if there's none. I think that's gonna be a huge deterrent more than anything else. Not if you actually have one, but more is the thought of, do they have? There was a gas station in Lorraine when I was an exotic police officer, they got robbed every month. They had a giant sign that says, "No concealed carry," and I go, "If you take that sign out and there's 10 customers in there, you know how many people are gonna think?" Because I'm a law-abiding citizen. If I see that sign, my firearm goes in my lockbox, I lock it up, I lock my car, I go in, do my business. If something happens, I, I don't have my firearm, because I follow the law. Couple months later, I go back, there's no sign. I go, "How are things going?" He goes, "Great. We haven't had one incident." I go, "Isn't that amazing?" A sign that says, "No firearms," tells me I'm safe with a firearm to go in there because nobody else has one. And I think that's one of the biggest things that we always look at when it comes to school zones. Everybody here probably has a concealed carry firearms license, and they can have a firearm, but nobody has them here because it's a school zone. Even my bossman, he goes, "Hey, are you, you have a firearm?" I go, "No, I said I know where I'm going. I'm coming here, I'm not allowed to have one, so I'm not even gonna bring one." If something was to happen, that's one of the considerations. Vetting them, making sure that they're very stable, that is a huge process. Teachers are under a lot of stress.
I understand.
My cousin, she's actually a principal out in Nevada, and we had this conversation for four hours. Why? Because I wanted her perspective. I'm a military guy. I've been around firearms since I was six. I've slept with one for many years right next to it. To me, it's just an object. It's the individual that actually chooses how it chooses.
Right.
So that's what we're looking for. And I, what are your concerns? I go, "I don't understand the teacher's perspective, just from dealing with kids." I mean, I have, I have a few kids, but I don't have 40 of them in a, you know, classroom at a time. I can only imagine. My three drive me crazy as it is. So she just talked about her views and what they've done for their school to actually kind of funnel things. They have officers patrolling around, but they don't have any armed teachers yet. So that's sort of a whole nother conversation, which we're gonna get into with less lethal options. Because most teachers won't carry.
Yeah, can we at least jump to less lethal? We don't need to get into safety features of future schools, but let's do less lethal and then just try to put a little bit of closure to this, knowing that obviously it's a longer conversation and quite frankly, we can't do anything for summer anyway, most likely.
Well, we can make it actually short. When it comes to less lethal options, if you please go to the next one, ma'am. We talk with individuals. There's a lot of things. We talk about response time. The average response time is gonna be 12, 18 minutes, depending on the situation for different areas. That's just average across the board. Not saying Parma's in that one, it's probably a lot better. Relative location where the officer is compared to where they are in part of the city, what can actually respond. We look at the teacher's security. Less there, less, can be less there in two minutes. They'll understand what's going on. They'll see the situation. Are we saying run in, tackle the guy? No. We just wanna know what part of the building. This is a large building. In order for a police team to assemble, to actually clear this out, it would take a huge amount of time. If we can narrow down where that threat is, they can respond a lot faster. Can you please go to the next one, ma'am? When we talk about teachers carrying firearms, there's a lot of things. There's ethical and moral concerns, the ability to take a human life. That's a huge consideration to have on your conscience. A lot of veterans suffer from that because that's just weighing on them. Now we're gonna ask a teacher who's already overstressed, worried about their kid's education, trying to give them the best education, now we're gonna add some more on to them. Religious beliefs are another one. Personal beliefs. Not to mention, it's not my job mentality. And I hate to say that, but it does happen to a lot of people. They have that. It's not my job. That's, that's extranet beyond, I don't wanna do it. Just some of the things that are actually out there. Please go to the next one. We talk with a lot of individuals when it comes to less lethal options. There's actually door lock systems that have an automatic paging system. And this was before you guys put the film in on that. This is for schools that can't afford that, to put that into their schools. This locking system just, there's a box on the side of the door, there's a mounting bracket. Once it's inserted, it sends a text message to a tablet, which can go to anybody you want, the police department, school administrators, and it lets them know what doors have been secured, locked and secured all the way down. It actually gives a green light. It's a nice system. I thought it was pretty ingenious. It's very cheap and very effective. We talk about ballistic shields. This is something that gives a teacher an ability to move the students away from view of the door, where they can't be seen, but if they had to, it's something better than a stern voice. Some of the shields that we looked at, we actually tested it from AKs to green tips. One actually took a 50 cal round. That's the only thing that pretty much penetrated. And that's a very hopping big round. And we were only at 20 feet, so it was definitely gonna do that. These rounds is just something for a teacher to grab and just protect between them and the students. The best thing we're gonna try to do is keep the doors locked. We even looked at pepperball launchers, little pepper guns. Talked with a lot of police, a lot of SWAT. I go, "How effective is that?" We have officers that come in and train with us all the time, East Cleveland. They go, "Oh, oh, it works." It's like, okay. I'm curious. I've been pepper sprayed, I've been through police training, I've been tasered. Said, "You know, I've never had a pepperball hit me." Guy goes, "I got a launcher in the car." I said, "Oh, looks like we're doing this." That was a horrible experience. It really was. I, I, it was ungodly. So I talked to him, I said, "How easy is to deploy in a school?" He goes, "In all honesty, if I had somebody with a shield and I had a pepperball gun, I can blanket an entire hallway that we would actually have to put masks on to go into, because the individual will not be able to move." And it's a less lethal option to contain a threat, so they can't just roam about. I go, "How is it for a teacher to actually deploy it through a door?" They go, "You can actually, with proper training, shoot it underneath the door. That mist will come out, and put a, a little bit of a shield, just to kind of irritate the individual if they're at the door." We talked about using pulse tasers, which police do use. Are they effective? I'm gonna say about 80% of the time. There are some individuals, if the prongs don't connect properly or too thick of clothing, it doesn't make that connection. But, we have two different options for teachers to defend themselves at a distance. That won't take a human life, if that's their concern. The biggest concern is the protection of the students. These were put together, well, one of, yep, there we go. These are actually put together, just talking with individuals, what can we do differently? Because everybody has that concern. When they come through my classes, I don't think I can take a human life. I understand that. That is, that is huge. In the times we live in, we can't ignore that there are some bad people out there. When it comes to different alternative means, they're out there, we just have to actually use them. When it comes to the package, we can actually look at, you're probably looking around maybe $3,000 per classroom, which is a lot cheaper than trying to redo the classrooms and all that. That's what we were actually looking for. What's the cheapest, most effective way we can actually reach out and get the smaller schools and everything else? Can you please go to the next one, ma'am? We talked about training, looked at a total of 16 hours. Now this actually involves the teachers to get tasered and have a pepperball hit with them. Now, if anybody's ever played paintball, that hurts. That hurts very well. Now, when it comes to the pepperball launchers, there are several different dispersion mechanisms. What I mean by balls. There's even rubber balls that are kinetic, so that just causes a lot of pain. So even if you had to engage somebody directly, that ball hitting them is, it hurts a lot. It, it really does. I've tried that too. You guys are welcome for me trying this stuff out, because, you know, we wanna make sure it works, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But yeah, it is definitely a means to knock an individual down or control where they're at. Can you please go on down to the next one? We talked about the door locks. This is actually one of the systems that I was looking at, and I had a lot of interest with the individual.
We have this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one on the left is what we have in every classroom.
So, now don't forget, this is just for the schools that already don't have it. That's what we were looking at. Now, they do have that paging system, if you get a chance. Did you guys do that one?
What?
They have the paging system, once it's locked in. I was watching the, the videos for that, it was pretty interesting. The locks are actually very simple to put on, they're very easy to use, they're very discreet. We're just looking at a little lock box right off the side of the door. Can you please go to the next one? We, aw, picture didn't load. So, where that X is, there's actually a pistol version of a pepperball launcher that the teachers could, well, you guys have it, but it's not up on the screen. Can you see? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know why it didn't load. But when it comes to that, this is one of the things that we talked about, having a small kit in the classrooms. Now, we, there are lock boxes for pistols where these things can be stored, permanently mounted somewhere. So you'll be able to open up a lock box with a code or a key, and you'll be able to access a pepperball gun or a pulse taser. Something that gives you something better than a stern voice and, you know, hoping they just kind of go, you know, leave you alone. We always wanna give you options. Can you please go down to the next? We talked about the pulse taser. This is actually one that I gave to my daughter when she decided to leave the house. The company that makes this, once it's released, it discharges for 30 seconds. The great thing about it is, it sends an alert to 911, to my phone, to my wife's phone, and gives me Google map exactly where it was used. As long as it was used, now a police report was filed, for protection, they replace it for free. Now, she wasn't 21 and she doesn't feel comfortable carrying a firearm, which I don't blame her. It's a hard decision to make, but it makes me sleep better knowing she at least has something that she can, you know, go to in case she has a problem in her own home. Can you please go down to the next one, ma'am?
Didn't load.
It didn't load either.
We see this.
So, what that is, is actually a piece of metal, it's actually designed to withstand firearm rounds. Now, it's not the, yeah. It's just meant to be held in the arm, so it's a defensive tool more than anything else. And that's what we're looking at as. Now, if the teacher did have, there was a shooting in a school, they should be taught to bring them across the line so they're out of view of everything else, but then they're just standing there. What are we gonna do? Flip over a desk? A normal 22 long rifle round, which is one of the smallest caliber rounds out there, will still penetrate through that desk. Not perfectly, but there's that chance. Well, we wanna have something that they can put between them and the individual that it ever comes down to, just for some protection. It's better than saying, "Don't do that." You know, it's not what we wanna go to for the first thing. Of course, we have, you know, the staff that's gonna be trained. Let them do what they're supposed to, especially the police. But, teachers have to stay where they're at until the police get there to actually clear everyone. You have to have the next one? We talked about some of the advantages with less lethal, more options for defense, price cost, less time for training. These systems are very easy to use. Once you actually charge the pepperball gun, the pistol version, it activates the cartridge. Until then, it just sits there, it's inert. Doesn't do anything, so you're not wasting any CO2 or anything like that.
And you have all of these training available at the Armory?
Yes. We're actually trying to put it all together into one curriculum with the scenario-based training, because we do have the virtual training, which allows us to implement the tasers and pepperball guns through different simulations. It's not the best acting in the world. You're not getting Johnny Depp, but you know, it's, it's very good. So it'll actually give you a chance to choose how you wanna interact with individuals. We control the scenarios. We control the actors. If you're yelling at them, they're getting back, we can have them back away, or we can have them get more aggressive. Let's see what you do. We wanna try to make training 10 times harder than real life. Why? Because when it happens in your own life, it's gonna be a cakewalk for you, because you'll know what to do. Your training will just kick right in. Can you please head down to the next? This is a word club. Sorry. You like that? Let's get timing. But for questions, you know, and when it comes to some of the training, a lot of individuals that we've talked to, we've tried to put something together to accommodate all schools across the board. You guys are well above what most schools are probably at right now when it comes to security. You got the films, you got the door locks, you have a team that's already investigated all that, looked at all your weak points. That is phenomenal. I, I, I live in Lakewood, now I gotta go sit there and ask them these questions, because I'm just looking around going, I hope they're on it like you guys are. When it comes to additional options for teachers, I think that's gonna be the biggest thing.
I, I think, if I can jump, first of all, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Here, here's what, given the fact that my first recommendation is a moot point, because we don't have the training yet at this point. But I think the second recommendation, I, I think that every business committee meeting, I think we should make this a standing point, safety and security, and I think we should talk through these things. It's just part of our agenda. And then the quarterly meetings, when the, I, I don't think we need, need to bring the police in monthly, but I think that would kill them, honestly, it just would be too much, but I think on a quarterly basis, we're meeting with these whole teams. I think we have two board members on the business committee, so I think we keep talking through these things, because I, I think what William just presented are some very viable options for us in a very immediate way. And then I think we continue to look at how, how House Bill 99 unfolds. That, that's my, what I would hope we do.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to know that we're ahead of the game. You know, as far as everybody having everything set, I, I like that. I appreciate you guys coming in. Both of you are very informative, lots to think about. I know there's a lot for us to digest. And I like the idea of the business thing, I just talk about it all the time. I believe that's you two guys, right, on the business committee? So, you know, I feel good about that, that there's some people gonna be talking about on the board, and I know you'll share with us what you guys discuss. And I like it. It's good. At least we're going on the right track. And I'd like to know, I'm pleased to know that we're way ahead of the game. I'm anxious to see this training develop through House Bill and what they do and how it comes about, and then we can decide what we're gonna do further, I think.
Yeah, I, I just have one question. On, on these pepperball launchers and, and the taser, do you have to have a carry license to have them, or that's, that's a separate?
That, this is something that can be standard in every classroom, as a kit located in the same location.
But you still have to have some kind of a certificate or whatever that you're qualified to operate it, or no?
We actually have the pepperball training and the taser training. We have certified instructors that we actually.
Oh, right at the Armory?
Correct.
What's a typical, what's that cost?
So you're probably looking at maybe standard cost, if you were to buy everything, you're probably looking at about $3,000 for the actual pepperball gun, the door lock, the ballistic shield.
No, 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 just the, just the.
Just those two. You're probably, just the paintball one, you're probably looking about, well, for the pistol version, about $600, totally. Correct.
So, I have a question related to Jeff. So, if we had, so like, our unsafe at home is biometric.
Yes.
The only, my husband and I are going to, if they can open that.
Yes.
That. Is there, and this might be a combination piece, is there, if we had, say, a cabinet located in, five cabinets located throughout every building?
Yes.
That the teachers all and staff know where they are. And we had all these items in those five cabinets? Because I don't really wanna walk into a classroom and see a ballistic shield hanging up, but if it was in a cabinet, is there an access, a way to access that, like, the prox cards that we already have for staff? You can swipe that and then, you know, maybe also another layer, just in case a kid ever stole a prox card, but like.
Now, we actually talked about that too, about for a quick assessment of an area. Changing the pepperball gun to the larger ones with more capacity would allow teachers to engage somebody at a distance, but still keep them isolated until the police got there. The problem with putting things in, in certain locations instead of everywhere, is once those, those areas are identified, that's some of the places where people are gonna look for it. Now, all teachers have to gather there instead of staying with their students. That was our main concern, was not separating the teacher and the students if there's ever an active shooter.
Well, what if it was other staff, though? Like, staff that's not normally assigned to a student?
Now, that's what we definitely talked about.
Like custodial, like the custodial staff, secretary, like.
Security team, additional administrations, and we did talk about that. Those would be the best people to meet at locations where these advanced, larger paintball guns are, that can hold more rounds, would be a great deterrent. One of the, well, actually, he's not retired yet, but he is retiring from Cleveland SWAT department, one of the gentlemen who's working with us. We, we had a long talk about that. And he goes, "Even if there was just one teacher with a pepperball gun and just shot 200 rounds in, that whole hallway just was just, you know, pepper. That's all it was." He goes, "That person, I guarantee you, would not move one inch from that area." He goes, "As soon as the response team was able to get in there, they would be able to go get that gentleman more than anything else."
Do you need to have a secondary layer, like, okay, so you got an administrator or whoever at the end of the hall firing this stuff off, what about it getting under the door into all the classrooms of the kids?
Once again, because it is less lethal, all it is, is our oleoresin capsicum, so it's just kyan pepper. It's a powder version. That's all it is. There's no chemical whatsoever. It's the same thing you put in your chili. Don't it irritate your eyes really bad? You're gonna, you're gonna have a nut allergy.
Is there, okay, so here's my mom, here's my mom radar that just went on. What about a kid with an allergy?
Now, see, that's one of the things too, that might be the problem, that might be unknown. People who have asthma, who have a hard time breathing, that's, that's kind of hard to predict too.
We're doing it in our life in that situation, though.
I know, I know that, but I mean, I don't wanna inadvertently.
Now, once again, though.
Or what, what happens?
Once again, though, now that's if it gets to that point. We're always thinking worst-case scenario too, let's turn around and go to best-case scenario. What if the door locks are in place, the individual can't go anywhere else, and they're stuck in a hallway? Now, when the police get there, they're still able to use the same items, but we can still get the students out safely. Now, cleanup even for these items is very easy to do. All it is, soap and water. It's all it takes to clean it up. There's no magic chemical or any spray or anything you need. It's literally just Dawn and water. We'll take care of it. But to, to cover every inch, I can. Because even individuals who have a high tolerance to peppers and food that eat that a lot, there's really not much effect on them either. I've seen gentlemen sprayed and they go, "Okay, that's all you have." And, you know, I've seen it in worse. I, I've been sprayed and I, I couldn't see for a week, and I was just like, wow. So it affects everybody differently. But when it comes to that option, firearm, pepperball gun, what do you think an individual would rather pick up first? Now it's better, you know, some, better than something than nothing.
Right.
Well, I appreciate the non-lethal arm options.
I do too.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Mark, do you guys have anything else before we?
I just had a quick question for clarification. When Steve asked about our resource officers, you said there were six schools, but three of those are armed, three are unarmed, correct?
No, those were all armed.
Oh. So the police, because he, because he said police shifts from Hillside, Normandy, Valley Forge.
It's, those are all armed. What, what we were saying is, our, our officers. So Albert back there, like, he's not armed.
Right, so the, so the ones at Greenbrier, Shiloh, Parma Senior High are unarmed?
The SROs?
SROs are armed. But here, here's where.
Our police officers.
SROs, so.
Here's where we fall down, is it Greenbrier and Shiloh, they split. It's one person for two.
Okay, I was just trying to figure it out.
Sorry.
I thought I heard him say that too, that he wasn't armed.
Right.
Those numbers are the police officers who are picking up extra hours, plus the SROs that they're armed against, the six.
Okay, I have one question about active school procedure. I'm gonna use the summer school thing that happened. Can we work on, while we're having this conversation, a better way to identify when there is an after-hours threat? To notify the parents of the athletes or extra school curricular, or extra, kids that are in the buildings doing stuff, other than taking classes? Because I can say twice, my kids have been in this. Once, I was at Columbia Station waiting for my kids' bus to get there, and it was at Greenbrier locked down because there was a woman with a knife in the vestibule. I had no idea until my kids called us. I know this last time, I had kids at Valley Forge at practice, and I know I'm not the only one, I've gotten several calls. Mark and I have talked about this. Is there a way, whether it be a centralized location that coaches, or maybe it's at the athletic, somebody has to put it in so we know what teams, and there's robocall lists for those people? If something happens, like, okay, here's the 87 athletes that are inside Parma Senior High right this moment, all 87 parents are getting a call.
Yeah, I mean, I think after the one in the spring. Yeah, I mean, I think after the one in the spring, I think the decision was that we're going to just notify everybody of everything.
But how are we tracking who's in the buildings? Because that's the problem, that not, there's, how do we know, like, how does the person